Okay. All right, it's seven oh two. I'm going to call the meeting to order. If everyone would please rise and we'll say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stand for a moment.
Yeah, a moment of silence. Tonight, I'd like to remember the families in America that have been impacted by gun violence in our country and also the forty-seven hundred civilians, including two hundred and seventy-two children who have lost their lives in the Ukraine as a result of the war. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Okay. So this meeting is being recorded live via Zoom and it will be uploaded later to the township's YouTube channel for viewing. Under the chairman's report, the board met an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss personnel and legal matters. Community Day will take place on June twenty-fifth at five o'clock until fireworks at dusk. That's usually around eight fifty-nine o'clock. Rain date is Sunday, the twenty-sixth. Also, under the chair report, we are pleased to announce that Chester County has awarded a grant to East Caution Township for park township park improvement project in the amount of sixty thousand dollars and sixty sixty thousand and sixty-three dollars. So we're pleased to receive that and we are grateful to the county. So thanks to all of them for making that happen. Um, yeah, I did the, yeah, thank you. Yep, got that one. There are no public hearings this evening and we have no pub, we have no emergency services reports. There is no financial report. We're speeding right along here and we're down to the approval of minutes and treasures report. So if we want to go ahead and take a look at the minutes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve both the May third minutes as well as the May twenty-fourth minutes.
Second the motion.
Terrific. Did anybody see any corrections?
I have one just to say a spelling correction.
Oh.
On the minutes for May third on page three, line forty-two. The testing is is actually phylogenetic, which is one word, P H Y L O genetic, not file genetic. But I wouldn't expect anybody other than a biochemist to understand phylogenetic, so.
Oh, thank you for the correction.
I don't know how I missed that.
Um, with that correction, um, does anybody else on the board have any changes or corrections to make? I'll just make a quick note here, Mike Lynch is not able to join us this evening, he's under the weather, so it will be now tossed out to the residents. Does anybody in the room have any questions regarding the minutes or on Zoom? And seeing none, I'm going to call a question to accept the minutes from May third and May the twenty-fourth. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And treasures report. Dave? Your microphone is not on.
Right.
Sorry. I know I'm tough.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll start with, you had a question this afternoon about the different interest rates on the debt servicing. The two thousand and three general fund is currently four point three over the life of the loan that matures in two thousand and twenty-three.
So I'm sorry, the two thousand and three.
General fund debt is four point three percent.
Thank you.
That's the highest and that will retire in two thousand and twenty-three.
Right.
The next general fund, the two thousand and seventeen bonds, is at two point seven percent. That retires in two thousand and thirty-seven.
Thank you.
Two thousand and eight sewer funds is four percent. That retires in two thousand and thirty-two. The two thousand and thirteen sewer fund is three point one percent and that retires two thousand and thirty-three. And the two thousand and seventeen sewer fund is part of the general obligation at two point seven and retires in two thousand and thirty-seven as well.
Thank you.
Dave, you looked into uh, re-upping on these things, right?
Yes, I did. The sewer funds, the first, the two thousand and three general fund, we're so close retiring next year that it doesn't make any sense to do. The two thousand and seventeen bonds, because of the market change from when I proposed it to May, it is basically a break even now.
What is, I was going to ask.
We were, we were at two hundred and thirty-five thousand probably to save.
What is the going rate?
It's exactly where we're at.
Where we're at, that's what I thought, okay.
Okay.
That's good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for doing that, Dave.
Sure. Uh, over the last two weeks, from May seventeenth to June second, the general fund revenue over this period was driven by earned income, local service tax receipts, the quarterly Verizon franchise fee, rental fees, building and permit, parks and recreation fees. The expenses for this period included the monthly we-go contribution, our insurance payments, legal expenses, paving materials, vehicle and equipment parts and maintenance, tree removal, township lighting and traffic light maintenance, new tennis pickleball wind screens that were approved by the board as well as routine operating expenses. Our capital reserve fund did incur roughly eighty-four thousand dollars in expenses. Fifty-eight thousand of that was for total site construction at the Hershey's Mill Dam, which if anybody can take a look, it looks pretty good so far.
Yes.
And we're wrapping it up soon. Twenty-six thousand was also for the replacement mower in Public Works, which was in our approved budget. That is almost a year old from when we ordered it, so we still have another piece coming in. The twenty-six thousand, it's going to end up being about eighty thousand total.
All right, would there be a motion on the?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we graciously accept the receipts and approve the expenditures as presented in the expenditure register and as summarized in the treasured report.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, John. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions regarding the expenditures? I was curious, Steve, on page two. Vendor number thirty-three twenty-two.
Batch one.
Batch one, yeah. And this is a Cohen Law Group. It says legal admin for Comcast in the amount of twenty-six hundred forty dollars.
Yes, that is our second out of three payments to pay Cohen to redo our Comcast.
That's, that's, that's what I thought it was.
Yeah, and we did get a discounted rate because there's good number of numbers.
A lot of municipalities are doing it together. That's right, okay. All right. And does anybody else have any other questions?
I don't.
Okay. Are there any questions from anybody here in the audience? Why? Russ, do you have any questions for us? Okay, no? Okay. Oh, Brandywine SBCI was a little expensive this month. Fifteen hundred and sixty-four, how many sprays was that?
I think it was thirteen.
Wow.
Thirteen.
It's unbelievable. It's like five cats in one go and it was three cats in another one. There was a dog bit somebody and.
Okay. All righty.
Pretty expensive.
It is expensive. So I'm going to call the question, those in favor paying the bills.
Aye.
And thank you, everybody.
Michelle, we did actually get a couple of payments on the return to owners.
No, we didn't.
Yeah. I think we collected two.
Oh, star in your helmet.
That's fantastic. All right. Moving on to old business, discussion of possible noise and nuisance ordinance changes. And I think that that's one of the reasons why we have Bill here tonight, if I'm not mistaken.
It is, I'll just do a quick introduction, Madam Chair. We had discussed this, well, you have all been discussing it prior to even my tenure here as far as the noise and nuisance and a lot of that surrounded the Sunoco discussion over the last few years. But this year in particular, when the Wellington issue came up, we started having that conversation again and it was decided to kind of look at this again and maybe hone in on some more specific things that we could do a little bit more quickly because last time you guys were contemplating a lot of different moving parts. So what we had decided were what my understanding was, and this is why I'm here tonight, to make sure we're on the same page, is that we were going to look at changing the timeframe of when construction is actually allowed. Because one of the things that came up when the Wellington work was it was allowed until ten PM on weekdays and we are, the board did not feel that that was an appropriate time for residents to have to bear that sort of construction. So that was, you know, the main crux of it. And then getting together with Bill, there's a lot of noise standards in our zoning ordinance, which should not be because we have a standalone noise ordinance. So we want to, in addition to changing times in the noise ordinance, we wanted to take out noise standards from the zoning ordinance as well and just concentrate on that standalone ordinance. And then the third sort of leg of this is creating a new, not a separate nuisance ordinance, but as Bill and I discussed, having a noise slash nuisance ordinance. And then we would present that to you. I mean, we're shooting for the June twenty-first meeting if we can get draft language together, but those are basically the three, the three things I'd like you all to discuss tonight is, are we on the same page with the timeframes or are we on the same page with the time changes? And if so, can we discuss some timeframes? I think we brought some up last time, but I'd like to hone in a little bit more on that. And then are we okay with, you know, looking at the other two for draft form? So I would invite the board to a discussion right now.
May I say one thing before the board?
Oh, actually, I would invite our solicitor to comment first. More discussion, I apologize.
No, 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 no worries. That was a great introduction and I appreciate that, Derek. So as he had mentioned, your, your ordinance is unique in that you have your standalone noise ordinance, but then you also have interwoven throughout various provisions of your zoning ordinance, noise regulations as well. And that makes it a little difficult to change things piecemeal. And because it's in your zoning ordinance, that implicates a public hearing and advertising in addition to just amending a standalone ordinance. So Derek and I had talked about, should we propose just making those small, simple fixes now with a larger scale, long-term fix down the road? But our recommendation, I think, would be to do this all in one fell swoop instead of doing a piecemeal because of those advertising costs and whatnot. So i- if you want to do, take care of some of the smaller stuff first, we can. But as I said, we would recommend that you do a little bit more of an in-depth dive, which would require a bit more of a discussion tonight on what you're looking for. But that's, that's certainly up to you guys.
What are you proposing then? When you want to do the whole project, you're saying you would go into the zoning regulation and pull out everything that had to do with noise.
Right.
Okay.
Because right now, I, I mean, with the standalone ordinance, you have the, the standalone that has criminal penalties associated with it, but then in a zoning ordinance, it has civil penalties and an appeal to a zoning hearing board. So there are two sets of regulations with two parallel paths with, that makes the township have to pick which one they want to go under, which doesn't make much sense.
Not to mention that if we want to make any changes, we have to make it in the zoning ordinance and.
Exactly.
That's a problem.
And, yeah, so.
That's a, that's a good point.
Yeah, so I, I would recommend we, we accept that, that pulling the noise and nuisance language out of the zoning ordinance.
Hundred percent.
I would be in favor of overhauling the, the, then we refer to as the noise ordinance, but I have a couple of comments. One, it refers to vibration as well and vibration was a big issue during the horizontal drilling of the, people had cracks in their foundations and, and pictures falling off the walls during hammer, hammer drilling and so on, which became a contentious issue between the homeowners and, and the residents. I only found one township in the entire state that has a vibration ordinance. And the issue is, my second point is measurement. And, and right now with our noise ordinances and order to enforce that, we've got to come out, put a stationary decibel meter done by an engineer, gets, you know, those kinds of things. And so I think any ordinance has to, has to also address the measurement, not only the decibel levels or the vibration levels. And one of the issues with vibration is how you measure, it's a special piece of equipment and has to do with bouncing things off of solid walls.
Right.
It, it gets really complicated. The one township, by the way, that has a vibration ordinance has it because they have a, a performance stage and sound studio in a residential area and they have heavy metal bands and it literally vibrates the windows of houses and so on.
Is that, is that Naston, David?
I'm not sure, I, I did a research a while ago on that, it might be, actually. So the third thing that, that we have to look at after we nail down measurements and not only what the measurements are, but how they're done. Because we do have issues where, you know, someone's having a house party, they've got outside speakers set up, they're playing loud music and they're having a birthday party. You know, do you want to really call in Panone and set up a, you know, tripod with the, with measuring equipment, you know, how, how do you address that? And that leaves me to the third thing, which is enforcement. I think we have to spell out in the ordinance, you know, the criteria for enforcement. And then finally, the definition of nuisance has all sorts of.
That's what I'm waiting.
Yeah, they all have nuances and I am sure there's a, you know, standards that other townships have used for nuisance, for a nuisance, but other townships use the nuisance ordinance in pipeline situations in construction where it was deemed to be, you know, affecting the health, safety and welfare of residents. And so just special focus on the definition of nuisance in, in that ordinance. Then, and I'm supportive of, at ten o'clock is ridiculous. I don't, even eight o'clock, I mean, some are seven and eight. I mean, I don't think we should allow construction in the township past seven or eight o'clock.
So we were, I think, when we initially had this conversation, the conversation, and you guys can change this at your whim, but it was seven to seven on weekdays.
Yes.
Nine to five on Saturdays and nothing on Sundays.
Yeah, I'm, I, I think that's fine. So that, so I'm in favor of yanking everything out of the zoning ordinance, having a separate ordinance focus on what I talked about and, and changing the hours. I'm, I'm comfortable with that, those are my comments.
So I think, David, just to, and Bill can jump in as well, but I think some of the things you're talking about from a nuisance perspective, this is why, if we bring a draft to you in June twenty-first, we may not be ready for advertisement because I think it's going to take a little bit of massaging.
I do too.
Particularly for the nuisance side.
Let me, let me ask, do we have nuisance in now?
You, you do. In your zoning ordinance, you have a provision that says, "No land or structure in any zoning district shall be used or occupied in any manner that creates any dangerous, injurious, noxious or otherwise objectionable condition, fire, explosive or other hazards, noise or vibration, smoke, dust, odor or other form of air pollution, heat, electromagnetic or other radiation or other condition in such a manner or in such amount as to affect adversely the reasonable use or value of the surrounding area or adjoining premises or be dangerous to public health or safety." And I will preface this, the whole conversation about nuisance, don't listen to this, they're notoriously difficult to enforce.
What I'm thinking is, maybe you could pull out the noise or the noise and vibration and leave the rest of that in.
Right.
In the zoning ordinance?
Yes, in zoning. And I'm saying that because that puts it into the zoning commission and I'd, I'd rather be buffered by them.
Well.
Noise we can handle as an ordinance, but the other stuff, maybe we will leave it in the zoning.
I don't believe it would have anything to do with the ZHB though, because it would still be administratively enforced.
Be administratively enforced, but then if there was an appeal, it would go to the zoning hearing board and they're not necessarily, they are supposed to interpret a zoning ordinance that relates to uses and area and bulk regulations, they're not necessarily experts in nuisance. I haven't, I have never seen an appeal of a nuisance enforcement go to a zoning hearing board, frankly.
Have you ever seen nuisance language in a zoning ordinance?
Well, generically, yes, but if you're going to use it to enforce, you should have a standalone because then it goes to a court. And because there, there's a, a burden, a higher burden.
Let me see if this changes your mind. Our zoning hearing board has three permanent attorneys.
They're fantastic, let me tell you.
One, one alternate attorney on it and they handle things pretty well. I'm just suggesting that that's another way to handle it, that's all, something to think about.
Very good.
Okay. Um, does anybody have anything else that they'd like to add? David was pretty succinct about.
Yeah, overall, David touched on it and, and I think it's a good idea.
I would, I would just say the draft motion, just again to reiterate, would not give us authorization to go to advertisement for specific language, it's just allowing us to get started and then bringing language to you to make sure we're kind of barking up the right tree.
Do we have to vote on that or is?
I would like a draft motion so we can get started because it's going to be solicitor, you know, time.
I don't know if your mic is on.
Reminding me about that.
Sorry.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we authorize staff and a solicitor to move forward with the draft of the following three ordinance changes. One, chapter one fifty-six noise with changes pertaining to noise levels in specific times of the day and general review of the ordinance language. Second, it would be chapter two forty of the zoning to remove noise standards from the, from that chapter. And three, a new nuisance ordinance that would regulate disturbances beyond noise.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or questions from the board? And are there any questions from any of the participating residents here in the room?
I just have a quick clarification, Derek, I was reading something else when they, you listed those times, can you send those times to me?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And Russ, do you have any comments or questions regarding this? Seeing none? Seeing none, then I'm going to call a question, those in favor of authorizing staff and solicitor to move forward with draft of the following ordinance changes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Alrighty. And under new business, discussion of the sustainability advisory committee's possible transition to an EAC or environmental advisory council. So Derek, you want to give us an idea of?
Well, this is just the, and I'll pass it over, I think, Christie, do you want to come up to the podium and, and give some idea? And just like to thank Christie for her help on putting this together, she did a lot of research.
I know she did.
Over the last few weeks, so she should be commended for that. And, yeah, this is the continued discussion, this is, I think, the one solid thing that came out of that ABC discussion as far as where we want to go towards it is possibly moving the SAC to an EAC. And Christie could get into some of the background and, and reasons why, but from here, it's a matter of seeing, you know, what we want to implement in the EAC ordinance, working with Bill to get that done as well as, as yet another ordinance, sorry, Bill.
That's okay, lawyers have to eat too, John says.
But I, I will, I, I think the best way to handle this is allow Christie to speak on some of her research over the last few weeks.
Well, I wanted to start by first of all thanking all of you and especially Derek for inviting me to participate in the next stage. And after the last meeting, remember, Mike said that it would be an either or and, and we have had assumed that would be the case. I was in touch with the We Conserve PA organization, which is the one authorized by Harrisburg to be in charge of EACs in the state. And this is the response, very brief response, when I said, would it be all right if we include, call ourselves an EAC slash SAC as long as we fulfill all the requirements and guidelines of an EAC? And this is their response, there's nothing in the law, Act one forty-eight of nineteen seventy-three that prohibits an EAC from also using the term SAC. You'll just want to be sure in your name usage that no one, council members, other volunteers, local governing board, forgets that you are an EAC duly created and appointed by the governing board according to the EAC guidelines. So that tells us that it's okay. And what I did, although I'm not quite finished, we sent a, a sample recommended ordinance to establish an EAC, but I went back today and looked again at the, the excellent guidelines in the original ordinance for the SAC. And I have to admit, we have kind of ignored them the last couple of years, we just went on with all of our programs, but when I read them again today, I realized there are several things specifically that David created in that original ordinance that would be excellent to continue to fulfill. So Derek, if you can bear with me, I can send you tomorrow, I've incorporated those things into the original. So now it's, if it's all right, I'm calling it an environmental and sustainability advisory council because we have permission and we will use all the guidelines of the EAC. But there are a couple of things that in the original SAC ordinance that would be excellent to include. So how about if I just send that to Derek tomorrow and he can forward it to you and, and to Bill, we'll do it all at once and then we don't have to do it in two stages?
Perfect.
Sure.
Is that all right?
It sounds.
Bill, Bill, off the top of your head, are, are you comfortable with what's being discussed as far as the combination?
I, I am, yeah, that, that, that's perfectly fine. I haven't seen it done before, but what's, what's a name?
Combined in the state of Pennsylvania, but then that makes us unique too.
Sure, I really like the environmental and sustainability advisory committee as opposed to doing the SAC slash EAC. I, I think that's an excellent name, actually. So I like this, I like to recommend that we incorporate that if we go forward with forming the EAC.
Yeah, and, and there's also nothing in the law, as you said, that, that prohibits an EAC from taking on additional tasks and responsibilities. So as long as we stick with the core EAC responsibilities that are in the law and adopted the way it's supposed to be adopted, I see no issue.
Great, there are so many, so many details outlined in the, you know, from the information provided by We Conserve and it's all in the recommended ordinance, yes, it's all in there.
Yep.
Christie, thank you so much for all the work you've done on this. It's, I, I know it's been really time consuming, I know that you have other responsibilities that you have taken on recently and we really do appreciate it.
Well, there's just. Well, there's just several things that would very much benefit East Ocean. So I have to say to make sure there are things in here that if, that on paper sound like they might possibly encroach on some of the current duties of other ABCs. Our committee will not do that at all. We will work supportive. We will be entirely collaborative, but they're in here because that's how EACs are set up. So we'll, we won't.
Nothing says you can't delegate.
But there are some things that nobody is doing that would be great and beneficial to
Thank you very much.
Okay, is that?
Oh, to direct the solicitor?
I, I would, I would, yeah. And I didn't put a draft motion here, but I probably should have because we should basically do what we just did with the other one is, is authorize staff and solicitor to work on a draft motion.
I'd like to make that motion. What he said.
I'd like to second that motion.
There we go. Can you come up with the verbiage for that for us? And, and so is there any further discussion here on the board regarding the ESAC? No. And is there any other further discussion here in the room or Russ, do you have any comments? So seeing none, I'm going to call a question. Those in favor of allowing the solicitor and staff to go forward with creating an ordinance for the ESAC? Okay, we're good. And next item under new business is consider request for shoring equipment by Public Works. This is, thank you so much, Christie. This actually is a safety issue. Currently, the couple of Public Works Department works in the water an awful lot and this would shore up those walls that are somewhat unstable. This gives them a larger workspace and the 12,665, 40 and 40 cent cost has been budgeted for fully. So Derek, do you have any other?
No, that, that pretty much explained everything, Madam Chair. It's, it's just a matter of right now, we're using six by six timber, which can get the job done, but there are just a lot better technologies in order to do trench work with aging infrastructure, as I feel like we talk about every single meeting. The Public Works crews in the trenches more and more for sewer, stormwater. So this would just give them an extra added layer of security.
Okay. Is there a motion? Anyone could?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the, what's it called? The wall? The whaler system for trench shoring. Just make a comment that you, some Public Works folks have experienced collapses in trenches and you do not want to have one of those with one of your Public Works. So this is a huge safety and also from an OSHA perspective, this is improved equipment and, and I think it's a prudent purchase.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, John. All right. Any other questions regarding the whaler system from the board or anyone in the room?
I would just like to say that the system at $12,000 is probably cheaper than buying lumber today.
Unfortunately, that's probably true. Oh yeah, please. So those in favor of purchasing this equipment for Public Works, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Under new business, we are to consider appointment of Derek Davis as our zoning officer as we say goodbye to Mark Gordon.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So as everybody knows, Mark Gordon, current zoning officer, director of code enforcement. His last day is this Friday. We wish him well in his future endeavors. I am advertising right now on a bunch of different areas for the zoning officer position until that is filled. I had talked about it with Mark and, and other department members in, in the code enforcement and we thought, given my background and a previous life, it would be best for me to take over that role temporarily. I have no, I have no intention of staying there past till I need to. So, so I'm just asking for us, myself to be appointed. I think it's just a motion, right, Bill? There's nothing else special that has to happen, correct?
That's correct.
Can we call it interim zoning officer?
Sure, man. It's probably a good idea.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion, Madam Chair. I move to appoint Derek Davis as to the position of interim zoning officer.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Anybody have an objection or question up here or in the room? Or on Zoom? Seeing none, I'm going to call a question. Those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Derek, for stepping up to that. Standing issues, we've got the Hershey's Mill Dam project.
Under the chairman's report, did you announce our grant?
I did.
Are we going to do that under new business?
No, I know. So we, we did receive a grant and I'll just reiterate that Chester County Commissioners under the 2022 Preservation Partnership Program awarded us $60,063 for the township park improvement project. And so we are grateful for that. So I will reiterate that once again. I'm not sure what all this.
Is that the pickleball deal?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, that renovation.
Okay. But thank you for, yes. So Hershey's Mill, do you want to give us? Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that Russ?
No.
Hello? Oh, yeah, because I can't, I can't get this on the Zoom to work and I was also can't get it on YouTube. So I just wanted to test it out because I do have a question for the public comment section.
That's Russ, yeah.
Oh, alright, okay.
Um, Russ, are you okay to wait for a moment?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to test it before I, I've been trying to test it ever since you start the whole meeting and it can't get through. So I thought I'd test this, this way.
Sorry about that. And thank you for telling us that. But we're going to go on to the standing issues and projects. So Hershey's Mill Dam project, we have an update?
Uh, just the update is that it's progressing. It should be done by the end of the summer. We are, I think the boardwalk is imminent. So that's the last big piece. Uh, but overall, it's looking pretty good. It's growing. It looks, I mean, the parking lot's getting there. So, so everything's, everything's moving along nicely.
We also did receive 250,000 in grant money, yes, which we were expecting.
What, what was the total cost?
I'm sorry?
About what was the total cost?
I think it was just under five million. I'll look for it.
Okay, but the 250,000 isn't like half or anything?
No.
I, I withdraw the question.
And do you have an update on Milltown?
Not as far as the permit, which I know we're all kind of waiting for.
Well, it's, it's still with the APA, right?
DEP. And I got faked out today because I got a email from Gana Fleming saying the permit was approved. And then it was actually for Hershey's Mill related permit that we were, because we had to do some emergency stuff because Ida, so we had to redo the permit. So it was for that one.
Just so people know, you know, we've made efforts through contacting our legislatures in Harrisburg to try to move this. It's, there's just no excuse for the DEP to be delaying this permit. It's, it's unconscionable. And it's so frustrating. I mean, they came in and required us to do this and then we're trying to get it done and they're holding up our permit.
It was submitted February 2020, so right before COVID.
And it's not like we haven't been following up this whole time.
I have one quick question about that. Did we reach out to Senator Comita? I can't remember if we asked. I know we did Senator Kane and Representative.
We did not, just Kane and Comita, but we actually.
But she will be come January.
Yeah, but she's not our current. We're supposed to go to Kane with those issues.
Well, yes, and we, we have done that.
Yeah, we have.
It wouldn't hurt to talk to Carolyn, would it?
If she sits on the environmental board, then let's, then somebody's got to contact her.
Yeah, I mean, we no comment. So, uh, yeah, she does sit on the environment.
So I will, if you want me to, I'll reach out to Carolyn.
That'd be great. That'd be terrific.
So the Hershey's Mill Dam, the total estimate is 1.765 million. We have spent one point, roughly two, and we still have another grants. Total of 630,000 in grants, so take 250 out of that. So we still.
I was going to say, Dave, when you said five million, I was like, that doesn't sound.
Or the Milltown in my, in my head.
Yeah.
Good.
All right. Thank you, Dave. And does anybody have anything under any other matter? Anybody in the audience, anything under? Okay. We're to the public comment period. Are there any public comments here in the room? Uh, Russ, do you, you said you had a, a comment that you wanted to make? We, you're, you're muted now. Hold on.
Hold on, he was unmuted. He has to unmute.
There we go. Wait, is he there?
I don't know what's going on with it.
All right, so.
There we go. Russ, you here?
Yes, I am. Sorry about that. Just a couple of things I'd like to follow up with you guys is that, did you take off the live meetings off of YouTube?
The li- live meetings are not on YouTube anymore. We upload them afterwards.
Okay, so not, not on there. Okay. Also, um, the East Ocean website, you know, the dashboard that shows the calendar of events. Uh, there's nothing that you can click on there to open up the, any agendas for any of the upcoming meetings. I know you have to go to the individual ones, which is what I had to do, but.
Oh, so you're saying, you're saying an agenda link to the, from the calendar?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, have we ever done that, Russ? I, I'm, I'm asking out of curiosity.
I used to do it all the time.
It might've been something we dropped when Susan left, so I can, I'll bring that up and we'll get that taken care of. I appreciate the information.
Okay. Then my last thing is on the May 3rd meeting, Board of Supervisors meeting, I asked if I could see or hear what the total cost to date was on the Paoli Trail.
And Dave has that information?
Yes, I do. You missed it at the last meeting, but I'll redo it for you, Russ. You wanted to know how much we've spent to date?
I'd like to know what we have spent to date and also what, what are any items that are open that is, that we're still going to have to spend on.
Okay. So what we've spent to date total dollars is four mil, five million, 482,593. And just over three million of that was grant money. So out of pocket for the township is 2,410,844. That's as of the most, most recent.
As of today then, right?
Uh, yeah, as of today.
How much over budget is that, Dave?
Uh, well.
Approximately, was it 40 or 50 grand?
Well, the total, uh, let's see, I'd have to take out because they budgeted the whole thing in total and I gotta take out the piece.
Hang on, Russ.
Yeah, it looks like about two million over the original budget?
Two million over the original budget?
Yeah.
Total.
That's what I kind of thought. And, and the numbers you gave to me and then with what little there is left to do, it does not include these feeder trails at all, right?
That's correct. It does not include the feeder trails.
They were never in the budget.
They were never budgeted for.
So if that's never in the budget, are we misleading the futures committee by letting them think that that's going to happen?
Uh, no, we, we told them that they have to understand that it's not currently budgeted for. And in that survey, they were supposed to make it clear that it was something still not budgeted for. And they were just trying to gauge an interest or not from the public. So that's, that's why they asked those questions, but they understand perfectly clearly that it's not none of the stuff that they put in that survey has been budgeted for, none of the amenities or anything.
It looks like you, we'd have to take out segments A and B that was budgeted together since we haven't done B. We're really only about 500,000 off of budget, original budget. But that doesn't take into account the segment A that was done. I don't have a direct comparison from segment A standalone.
Right. Or, or any of the future alternative routes? You don't have any estimations?
No, we have estimates. We have estimates on those. They range from 4.3 to 2.2 million at the lowest.
That would be fair to, for me to think that those alternate routes are going to be considered over budgeted items? Well, you earlier said we're over budget by $2 million. So we go to these alternate routes, whichever one we decide to do, is that going to be adding to the, the 2 million that we're over budgeted on?
It's kind of a slippery slope. The, so currently, if you take out segments A and B, we're about $500,000 over budget. And if you look at the total, we would be about, if we take the most expensive alternate route, we would end up being about $2 million over budget.
Okay, okay. So, all right.
Cheapest route we would be about on budget.
The cheapest route would put us on budget.
Close. No feeder, no feeder trails.
Right, right. Feeder trails were always something that was intended to be done later on. Uh, so the, the original budget, we, we can meet the original budget if we use the least expensive route. Is that what you're saying? Or, or?
It would be close, yeah.
I know, I know you're going to be specific with me and I'm being general. We'll be close to the original budget. Okay, that's, that's information for me too. Russ, what do you think?
I, I think it's a lot, I think it's not, it's a lot better than what I thought. I just came out of the, I did go to the futures committee meeting, um, last, let's see, when that was, when that topic was up back in March. And I came out of that meeting that that was going to be costing, that wasn't, that was part of the budget. Then I asked specifically of Tom, is this, because he said they're going to do a hard paving on the feeder trails. And I said, was it in the budget? And then he, then he came back and said, no, it's not in the original budget. That's why I keep asking these questions.
Right. And Russ, to be clear, it's not determined if any of the feeder trails will actually be paved. It's going to depend on the board at the time when feeder trail is proposed. Some of the feeder trails might be wood chips. Some of them could be asphalt. Some of them could just be existing Mecadam. So it's just going to depend on the trail and it's going to depend on the board at the time.
Right, okay. And when, how, how much further, how much longer are we going to be just talking about this before we make a decision?
I mean, it's, it's very conceptual right now, Russ. So what I would say is that it needs a lot more fine tuning than, than what we have now.
Plus, we don't have $2 million right now.
Yeah. So the board, I mean, the board put it out to all the ABCs, so I'll be getting input from them over the summer. And I, I already started that at the planning commission last week. But I, I, I mean, if you look at the original plan and how long that was talked about before there was a shovel on the ground and then you're talking about changing the route, you know, it's, it's not something that could be done overnight. So it's going to be quite a while. I can't pinpoint exactly.
Yeah, if we wanted to go out for grant money for those alternate routes as well.
Right.
That takes a little doing.
You have to understand that, you know, the Chester Valley Trail, for example, which is, you know, about 15 miles. They started thinking about that 20 years ago. I didn't think it was ever going to be built in my lifetime. I mean, because of the, all the permitting, getting easements, all the engineering, moving utilities, repairing culverts, permit process from the state, it takes a long time. So you know, the Paoli Pike Trail may not be finished in my lifetime.
So the best thing for me to do is to keep reading the agendas.
Well.
What did you say, Russ? I'm sorry.
The, the best way for me to keep up to date with this is to keep reading the agendas on future meetings. It's what I'm trying to do.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, to answer your question, yeah, Russ, that would be the best way.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks again, everybody.
You can always reach out to, to us by email and you know that you can always, always do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
I know.
See you later. Does anybody have any other comments? There are no liaison reports. There are no correspondence to report. I think we've come up to item 16.
Great. Madam Chair, I'd love to make the motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.